Okay.
I'm not here. Good evening, everyone. Good day. You didn't mention that. No, that would be wrong.
Okay, counsel, before we begin, let me take a quick roll call and make sure we're going to have a quorum. President Nebiker? I see you there, you're there. Counselor Henderson?
There.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Here.
Counselor Welch?
Oh, she's going to be absent.
She's going to be absent, all right. Counselor Butler is here, and Counselor Sorensen. You need to unmute, there you go.
I'm here.
Yes, we see you, we just couldn't hear you.
Thank you.
So nice to see you and hear you. All right, uh, let me go through the staff right quick. Attorney Sweeten? Attorney Sweeten? Jake Sweeten? All right, maybe we'll be flying blind tonight. Brian Sullivan?
I'm here.
Was that you coughing?
Yeah, not me.
Okay. And Bar Chief is here. Alice Kelly is here. Uh, I thought it, Steve Kunkka is here. Clint Siemens is here. Mike Cannell, are you calling in?
You got mayor, I'm here.
All right, we got you. And clerk is here, and... The DC is here, all right. So we're missing Attorney Sweeten, unless he's... Just came on.
Can we try to call him?
Yes, please. All right, it is now 7:00 PM. I will call this meeting to order. First, regular meeting for the council. In Emmett, Idaho. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the E D invocation, and then we will follow the rest of the agenda. Please stand with me. Place flag. And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, we come before you this evening to ask you to preside in this meeting tonight. As we are in the midst of the election season, one thing we need at the national, the state, and even here at the local government level is wisdom. We as citizens need wisdom to know how we ought to vote, and the elected officials, and those running for office likewise need wisdom to serve well. You, Lord, are the fount of all wisdom, and so we pray that you would abundantly supply wisdom from above to us all. Father, we pray for these proceedings here tonight, that peace, and grace, and civility would rule the day. May the officials here representing our city carry out the business before them with the utmost integrity, care, impartiality, and diligence. And may any citizen who participates in this meeting tonight do so respectfully, honoring those whom you have ultimately put in place for your good purposes. Finally, Lord, we pray for law enforcement and firefighters here in Emmett. Please protect them from all harm, as they serve our community to protect us. We pray that all their interactions with the public would be professional and courteous, and that the people of our city would respond in kind. We ask these things for Jesus' sake. All right, please receive it. And at this time, there is a slight modification, but it's one of those modifications that are good. Clint Siemens decided he had so much on there that he's asking, uh, on the consent agenda, simply to strike the discussion information and update on item seven, which was the CIP. On the grounds, it's probably not ready for prime time. So if you have the agenda at home, just strike number seven, and we'll go from, uh, the, um... We'll just go right into after the, uh... After the approval of the minutes and accounts payable, we will go into the non-consent agenda. So that being the case, with that modification, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended as a procedural document.
Mayor.
I'm going to give it to Counselor Henderson.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Amended?
Amended, as amended.
As amended, okay. And who's the second?
Counselor Ruzinkin.
Counselor Ruzinkin. All right. The main motion by Counselor Henderson is to approve the, uh, the agenda, uh, as... I'm sorry? Hello?
I said consent agenda, I meant approve the agenda.
Okay, approve the agenda as amended. And with that understanding, Counselor Ruzinkin, is that your second?
That's what I was...
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to, uh, to accept the agenda as, uh, as modified and presented orally. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? If so, signify by saying nay. Hearing none. Are there any extensions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? We have, uh, a number of action items tonight, uh, from ordinances to permit fees, to quotes, to pathways, you've seen it. Is there anybody that faced upon the action items feels that they have a conflict of interest, a potential conflict of interest that they need to declare? Hearing none. Moving on to item six, are there any declarations of council members' discussion of any of these action items outside the open meeting that you wish to declare at this time? Hearing none. Going on to the elected officials. Uh, with regard to World Polio Day proclamation, is... Is there anyone here from the Rotary Club?
Yes, mayor.
All right. Uh, well, I tell you what, once you come on down...
Come on down.
Come on down. And, uh, once, once I make this proclamation, I will give you the official proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
And this is, I'll tell you, this is kind of awkward because we've got this setup here, but it's the best we can do right now. But, uh, this is something that we do annually, and so I'm, uh, I'm very glad that you brought this to my attention again. You always bring me the template.
Yeah, so trying to get you to do it as sponsorship, too.
I did, I know, yeah. Uh, so anyway, this is the proclamation for World Polio Day. Whereas Rotary International is a service club that's dedicated to improving and strengthening the community in which we all live, where the international membership exceeds 1 million, and whose motto is "Service Above Self", whereas polio is a crippling and potentially fatal disease that still threatens children in all parts of the world. Whereas Rotary International launched its Polio Plus program in 1985, the first initiative to tackle global, uh, polio eradication, which has resulted in Rotary contributing more than 1.2 billion, that's billion with a B, and countless volunteer hours to protect more than 2 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary's advocacy efforts have played a role in decisions by donor governments to contribute over 19 billion to the effort, and whereas there are only three countries that have never stopped transmission of the wild polio virus, and without continued eradication efforts through inoculations, education, and research, experts say, polio could rebound to 10 million cases in the next 40 years. And whereas the polio cases represented by the remaining 1% are the most difficult to prevent due to factors including geographical isolation for public infrastructure, armed conflict, and cultural barriers. And whereas until polio is eradicated, all countries remain at risk about breaks. Whereas the Emmett Rotary, uh, Rotary Club and its members are answering the call to donate their time and personal resources to end polio, and have organized fundraiser, "Pens for Polio", on October 24th, 2020, to bring the Emmett community together to join in the international fundraising campaign. Uh, now therefore I, Gordon W. P. G., Mayor of Emmett, Idaho, joining with countless other communities worldwide, we hereby proclaim October 24th through October 25th, 2020, to be World Polio Day in the great city of Emmett, Idaho, and with the score of, I appear to, set my hand this 13th day of October, 2020. For the record, state your name and what you would like the council and anyone who might be watching to know.
Well, polio is a very important cause, and we take it very seriously here in Emmett. Uh, we have quite a big following of people. Uh, we get together, this is the only fundraiser we do every year that goes strictly to polio. So anybody that would like to come down to the bowling alley on the 24th and sponsor a lane, $50, $25 a bowl, all that money goes to this big cause.
All right, Daniel Bryce. Daniel Bryce. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, counsel, is there anything for the, uh, the good of the order that you have? Hearing none. Onto the consent agenda, we have the amendments to approve from 22 September of this year, the regular meeting, as well as the accounts payable. Counselor Butler is here, and he'll just go through, I don't know, the stack, but it seemed like it was about a foot high. Probably not that high, but it seemed like an awful lot. And, uh, did you, did you find anything out of the ordinance?
Uh, just a couple of things that were definitely...
Okay. So, uh, with that, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, 22 September, 2020, for the regular meeting and the approval of all accounts payable.
Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All right, so that would be President Nebiker, and the second was Counselor Henderson. Am I guessing the, uh, the voices correctly?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. So the main motion, uh, is to approve the, uh, minutes from the 22 September, 2020, regular meeting, as well as the approval of all accounts payable. You only seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none. Are there any extensions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion is passed unanimously. Going on to the non-consent agenda, the first item is approval of ordinance O-2020-13. This is an ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending a portion of section 9-6-3 of the city code, Emmett City Code, by changing the interior lot side setback requirements from seven feet to five feet, and providing for an effective date. That's ordinance O-2020-13. And I believe that, uh, our building director, building and zoning administrator, is on the line. Brian Sullivan, what do you wish to let, to tell the council?
Counsel, we had this public hearing about a month ago for this ordinance amendment. What I'm looking for tonight is a motion to move forward and approve this ordinance, waive the rules, and read one time by title only.
All right, are there any questions by council members for Mr. Sullivan on this? Is there any other individuals from the staff that would like to address this issue? Hearing none, and the chair will, uh, entertain the motion in accordance with Mr. Sullivan's request to approve the ordinance, waiving the rules, and to be read by ti- uh, by title, uh, one time only.
Mayor.
President Nebiker?
Yeah, I, I do have one question, I'm sorry, I do want to ask Brian, because I wonder if this is the one we're calling with the dupeleg ordinance, is that correct?
No, this doesn't have anything to do with the dupeleg ordinance. We helped us in the public hearing to reduce the side setback. So it's in alignment with the dupeleg setback, by the...
That's what I'm trying to see, these are getting more applied to the same, same for the dupeleg as the...
Correct.
Yeah, with that clarification, is there a motion?
Mayor.
Yes. Counselor, or President Nebiker?
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance here on O-2020-13, uh, ordinance of the city of Emmett, amending a portion of section 9-663 of the city code, by changing the interior lot side setback required from seven feet to five feet, providing for an effective date. Like this is the rule requiring the words be read, uh, three times, and for it to be read one time by title only.
All right. And of course, that includes by law the mayor's sign, correct?
That is correct, from Mr. Biden.
All right.
I'll second it.
By Counselor Ruzinkin? All right, uh, the motion has been made to approve ordinance O-2020-13, an ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending a portion of section 9-6-3 of the city code by changing the interior lot side setback requirements from seven feet to five feet, providing for an effective date, mayor's sign, and dispensing with the rule requiring ordinances to be read on three separate days, once in full, and that the ordinance, uh, be read once by title. Any further discussion? All right, we will call for the question, and we will do so by a roll call vote. If you are in favor of the motion, the appropriate response is yea. And if you oppose it, the appropriate response is nay. President Nebiker, how do you vote?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Nay.
One nay. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Nay.
Yea. Counselor Welch is absent. Counselor Butler? Yea, yea. And Counselor Sorensen?
Nay.
Okay. There being a quorum, there are four yays, one nay by Counselor Henderson. The, uh, the motion passes. And so at this time, Madam Clerk, if you would, uh, do the reading.
Ordinance number O-2020-13, an ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho, amending a portion of section 9, 6, 3 of the city code by changing interior lot side setback requirements from seven feet to five feet, and providing an effective date.
All right. Thank you. That being the case, the chair at this time will entertain a motion to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O-2020-13 by the title, as performed by the clerk, and directing the mayor to sign and direct that it be published, uh, by summary. Oh, excuse me. But before, before we do that, uh, was that to be by summary? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, it is.
All right. Although the motion, you certainly have the option of doing it or in full, but the court, the... Uh, the, the chair at this time will accept the... Entertain the motion with regard to having the ordinance published. Mayor.
Mayor.
Okay, Cat, it's, uh, Smith, hold on. Counselor Butler, because he's here, I heard him first.
I move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance number 02... That's, oh, oh, sorry, O-2020-13, directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published by summary. Okay, and accept the first and only reading of that, except the only...
All right, uh, motion has been made by Counselor, uh, Butler to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O-2020-13, directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published by summary.
I'll second it.
Is that Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the main motion has been made to, uh, accept the first and only reading of the ordinance, directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published, uh, by summary. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We will now have the vote, and again, by roll call. President Nebiker, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Nay.
Nay. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Nay.
Yea. Four yays, one nay, once again Counselor Henderson. Motion passes. The next matter is to approve ordinance O-2020-14, which is an ordinance annexing to the city of Emmett, Idaho, certain real property located in the unincorporated area of Gem County, Idaho, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Emmett, Idaho, establishing the zoning classifications of said real property, directing that copies of this ordinance be filed as provided by law, and providing an effective date. And once again, Mr. Sullivan, do you have words of wisdom for the council on this issue?
If there are any help, both of them ordinance, um, for the annotations of the 5.708 acres on 12th Street. We have the two public hearings, one is on the commission, and one is to be counseled for approved, yeah, please. So I'm just looking for the same type of motion to move forward, waive the rules, and reget, um, the annotation ordinance by title only, and use publication.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for, uh, Mr. Sullivan on this ordinance? Hearing none. Is there any other, uh, member of the staff? Any other director that would like to be heard on this issue? Seeing and hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance O-2020-14, which would include dispensing with the rule requiring that the ordinance be read on three separate days, and only once in full, and, uh, that it be read, uh, or once in full, and that the ordinance be read only, uh, by title.
Mayor?
Yes.
President Nebiker, I make a motion that we approve ordinance O-2020-14, an ordinance annexing to the city of Emmett, Idaho, certain real property located in incorporated area of Gem County, Idaho, continues with the corporate city limits, limits of the city of Emmett, Idaho, establishing the zoning classifications of federal property, directing that copies of the ordinance be filed and provided by law, providing for an effective date. Also, like this was a rule requiring the words be read on three separate times, or be read one time by title only, and the mayor to sign.
All right. Motion. And that's Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Okay, record, rule, and plaque that, uh, President Nebiker has moved that, uh, ordinance O-2020-14 be approved. This is an ordinance that annexes to the city of Emmett, Idaho, certain real property located in the unincorporated area of Gem County, Idaho, and contiguous corporate limits of the city of Emmett, Idaho, establishing the zoning classifications of said real property, directing the copies of the ordinance to be filed as provided by law, providing for an effective date, dispensing with the rules requiring that the ordinance be read on three separate days and once in full, that the ordinance be read only once by title, and the mayor to sign. And it was seconded by Counselor Henderson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote will be taken by roll call. President Nebiker, how do you vote?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Welch is absent, Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. And Counselor Sorensen? Yea. Five yays. I'm sorry? What? What? Oh, okay. Five yays, no nays. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance O 2020-14, an ordinance annexing to the city of Emmett, Idaho, certain real property located in the unincorporated area of Gem County, Idaho, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Emmett, Idaho, establishing the zoning classifications of said real property, directing that copies of this ordinance be filed as provided by law and providing an effective date.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the ordinance has been read once by title in accordance with the motion. The Chair will now accept a motion having to do with the acceptance of the first and only reading of the ordinance by title, directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published by summary. Before we do that, Mr. Sullivan, do you have anything to add with regard to the publishing motion?
No, sir, I don't.
All right. Chair will entertain the motion.
Mayor?
President Nebiker?
Yes.
All right.
I make a motion, we... I make a motion to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O 2020-14 and it to be extended publication in summary and for the mayor to sign.
All right. Motion has been made to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O 2020-14, directing the mayor to sign, directing that it be published by summary. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. Second by Counselor Henderson. The main motion, of course, by President Nebiker. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Nebiker, how do you... How do you vote?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Two yays. Counselor Zinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Nay.
Yea. Five yays. No opposition. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. The next matter, Mr. Sullivan, is your approval of waiver of building permit fees for perdu in the amount of $1,234.55. Do you wish to address the council?
And council, I believe you all have the letter in your package with the explanation on that. Are there any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
My question is per our city attorney, Mr. Sweden. Is there any concerns with this, that we were to waive this fee for a number of...
Well, legally, I mean, the council sets all the fees, so if you have the prerogative to waive them if you want, you are setting a little bit of a precedent. But legally, since you set the fees, you have the ability to waive these fees. These aren't tied to any kind of enterprise fund where we got, you know, a requirement that you have to collect fees. So, that answer your question?
Yeah, I was really sure we didn't have anywhere we could not already do that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
The nice thing, in my opinion, about this precedent is it's not stereisizing. So if you have a good reason not to do it in the future, you don't have to. But this is, I think, what you're going to find out that with this regional technical academy, particularly with what they have planned for in the aviation, on the aviation side, that this will be a great, great benefit to this valley. So having said that, the Chair will entertain whatever motion the council might have.
Mayor?
Counselor Henderson?
I make a motion to waive the building permit fee in the amount of $1,234.55 per perdu.
All right. Motion has been made by Counselor Henderson and I... Was that Counselor Zinkin seconding it?
Yeah.
Your word?
All right. Been seconded by Counselor Zinkin. Is there any further discussion? I think I'll probably be able to just take a voice vote on this one. All those in favor of the motion to waive the building permit fee in the amount of $12,34.55 per perdu, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any in opposition? If so, say nay. Hearing none. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Going on? Mr. Canetl, are you on?
Yes, sir.
This is the approval of the Dell computer quote in the amount of $38,030.40. What do you have to tell us, sir?
Mayor, council, this is part of the last CARES Act project that we submitted to the State Controller's Office for, which was subsequently approved without any issues. So this is a quote and an order to purchase a bulk of laptops. The laptops will benefit every department across the city in one form or another. So we are just looking for a motion to go ahead and approve that quote of $38,030.40. Do you have any questions?
Hearing none. Chair will entertain the motion.
Mayor?
Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the Dell computer quote in the amount of $38,030.40.
All right, the main motion has been made by Counselor Henderson to approve the Dell computer quote in the amount of $38,030.40. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
President Nebiker? All right. President Nebiker seconds the main motion having been made by Counselor Henderson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Dell computer quote in the amount of $38,030.40, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please indicate nay. Hearing none. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. Next matter is the approval of the pedestrian bicycle master pathways plan. And Director Siemens is here.
Good evening, Mayor Nebiker.
He just came in on his bicycle, which is kind of interesting.
Yes, very good. Tonight, I'm presenting the pedestrian bicycle master pathway plan. This is a plan that we have been working on over the last couple of years. Our objective with this was to kind of bring all of our paths and bike routes together through development. And with this plan, it would allow us to work with developers and obviously ourselves as we build these pathways out, that we stay in kind of alignment with one another. And what this will also do is be able to create like a new signboard that will start being placed, hopefully on grant dollars, around our walking path to kind of direct and dictate where you are on the path and where you will be going to and how many miles to the next destination. So tonight, I'm looking for a motion to approve the pedestrian and bicycle master pathway plan.
Any questions for Mr. Siemens?
Mayor?
Yes.
President Nebiker, does this have anything to do with the stuff they were doing around those trees during the cruise night event?
Not to my knowledge. I don't believe so, President Nebiker.
For the record, President Nebiker, what do you mean doing around the trees? What, where?
No, true, true, our cruise night, they had all the roads kind of pushed out on the intersections to try to figure out the pathways for the pedestrians easier. I hear that this is going to be involved in this.
Oh, you mean that test thing? No.
No, no, yeah, this is just, this is just our pathways, so it's kind of, kind of like our green belt. And then our bike paths. As you know, when Johns comes in, Johns will have bike paths down for pedestrians on bicycles. So this is that master plan. Yeah, that was a different program altogether, but still pedestrian safety was what that program was. But this is just to tie all of our pathways and our bikeways to our parks and our facilities and downtown businesses and other commercial businesses, along with some of our river paths and stuff. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the pedestrian and bicycle master pathways plan.
Mayor?
Counselor Henderson? Yes.
I move to make a motion to approve pedestrian and bicycle master pathways plan.
All right, motion has been made by Counselor Henderson. Is there a second?
Mayor, I second that.
All right. Looks like that is Counselor Sorensen. So the main motion is to approve the pedestrian and bicycle master pathways plan with, duly seconded by Counselor Henderson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, indicate with a nay. Hearing none. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, the motion passes unanimously. The next matter has to do with the approval of the Idaho Community Forestry Program and the Community Forestry Advisor Agreement. Mr. Siemens?
So Mayor, council, this is something that we enter into every year. This just gives us opportunity with the forestry program and the advisory agreement to reach out to them for really just their arborist free training. We can always have them come over and guide us on some of our trees that we have concerns with, so we don't have to contract that out. So tonight, I'm asking for approval, or asking for a motion to approve Idaho Community Forestry Program, Community Forestry Advisor Agreement between the city of Emmett and Gary Bates, South Idaho Community Forestry Assistant with mayor to sign.
All right. And along those lines, I would inform the council that we received a very nice card from one of our senators congratulating us on being a tree city. So that being the case, Chair will entertain the motion to approve the agreement. Counselor Henderson?
I make a motion to approve Idaho Community Forestry Program, Community Forestry Advisor Agreement between the city of Emmett and Gary Bates, South Idaho Community Forestry Assistant with the mayor to sign.
All right. The motion has been made by Counselor Henderson and Counselor Butler has seconded it. Is that a yes?
Yes.
All right. Counselor Butler has indicated he seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Therefore, we'll have a vote on the motion to approve the Idaho Community Forestry Program and the Forestry Advisor Agreement between the city of Emmett and Gary Bates, South Idaho Community Forestry Assistant with the mayor to sign. And we'll take a roll call vote. If you approve the motion, the appropriate response is yea. If you disapprove, it's nay. President Nebiker, how do you vote? Yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Zinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Nay.
Yea. Five yays, no nays. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. The next one is the motion to approve the actual cost railroad construction agreement for Johns Avenue Railroad Crossing, AAR slash DOT, crossing number 818728L, project number A020 parenthetically 578, key number 20578, Idaho Transportation Department Agreement Number 9840, between the Idaho Northern Pacific Railroad Company and the city of Emmett, with the mayor to sign.
So Mayor, council, I won't reread that again unless you want me to, but...
No, we've done this.
Right. So what this is, is you've seen me bring agreements and everything. The Idaho Northern is going to be doing the repairs on the tracks. And so ITB approached me and asked me how much asphalt that we wanted to have replaced. And we kind of went back and forth on... They kind of want to stay right real close and I want to go out further to make a safe entrance and exit on these areas. And so the agreement we had is, I think they got tired of dealing with me and said, well, we'll just throw a big number out there and let you guys contract it and then we'll just reimburse you. So that's what these, these are. It's just basically dollar amounts to allow us to contract a paving outfit and get done what we feel is appropriate, which works better for ITB because they can't get really outside the track area. So tonight, I'm requesting a motion to approve actual cost railroad construction agreement for North Johns Avenue Railroad Crossing with the mayor to sign.
Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson?
Make a motion to approve actual cost railroad construction agreement, North Johns Avenue Railroad Crossing, AAR slash DOT crossing, number 818728L, project number A020 parenthetically 578, key number 20578, Idaho Transportation Department Agreement Number 9840, between Idaho Northern and Pacific Railroad Company and the city of Emmett, with the mayor to sign.
All right. Counselor Henderson has made the motion and Counselor Zinkin has seconded it. Is there any further discussion with regard to the motion?
Mayor, President Nebiker?
Yes.
I was just curious, do we need to have a dollar amount listed in the motion or is it...
There, there is, the reimbursement is in the, in the contract of $150,000 on that. So we can add that number to it or it is attached to this, this contract.
For $150,000, I'll put that in the motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right. We'll call that an amended motion, which is agreed to by the mover and the seconded. That being the case, any further discussion? Calling for the question then on the motion to approve the actual cost railroad construction agreement, North Johns Avenue Railroad Crossing, AAR slash DOT Crossing number 818728L, project number A020 parenthetically 578, key number 20578, Idaho Transportation Department Agreement number 9840, between the Idaho Northern and Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Emmett with Mayor to sign, amount of $150,000. How do you vote, President Nevador?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Got two yays. Counselor Reznikin?
Yea.
Yea? Is that a yea?
Just a word.
All right. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea? Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Yea. Five yays, no nays. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. The next reimbursement contract or actual cost, whatever it is. Oh, for that, okay. Mr. Simmons?
Mayor Council, you have in front of you the motion to approve actual cost railroad construction agreement. This is for the North Wardwell Avenue Railroad Crossing. Um, the reimbursement on this one is $50,000. I'm looking for a motion with all of, uh, the codes and everything in it with, uh, the amendment of $50,000 to the motion.
All right, are there any questions then for, uh, Mr. Simmons? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the actual cost railroad construction agreement, North Wardwell Avenue Railroad Crossing, AAR slash DOT Crossing number 818726X, project number A020 parenthetically 364, key number 2364 Idaho Transportation Department Agreement number 9839, between the Idaho Northern and Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Emmett with Mayor to sign and amount of $50,000.
Mayor?
Yes.
President Nevador, I make a motion that we approve actual railroad cost, cost railroad construction agreement for North Wardwell Avenue with all the information that's provided.
All right. That's a nice pricey. And it was seconded by Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion?
I didn't know I could do that.
All right, no further discussion then. The motion pending is to approve the actual cost of railroad construction agreement, North Wardwell Avenue Railroad Crossing, AAR dash, or excuse me, slash DOT Crossing number 818726X, project number A020 parenthetically 364, key number 2364, Idaho Transportation Department Agreement number 9839, between the Idaho Northern and Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Emmett with Mayor to sign, amount of $50,000. President Nevador, how do you vote?
Yea.
All right, yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Reznikin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Yea. Five yays, no nays. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. All right, next matter is the hangar lease.
So Mayor Council, uh, this termination of this lease, uh, is to, uh, move someone else into the hangar that's been sold. So I'm requesting, uh, a motion to approve termination of hangar lease with Scott K. and Helen K. Carter with Mayor to sign.
Mayor?
Wait, wait, wait. I is, is, is the lease, uh, hangar lease agreement Alden Anderson?
Oh, sorry, I got, I got backwards here. I'm going to retract that. Can I go again?
Yes.
Sorry.
This, this is what we call a mulligan.
Yes. Mayor Council, this is what happens when you have seven things on the agenda. Um, so this is the, uh, this is the hangar lease agreement that will be followed by the termination that we just approved. Okay. Um, so the, I'm requesting a motion to approve hangar lease between Jeffrey Alden Anderson and the City of Emmett with Mayor to sign.
All right, any questions?
Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson?
I make a motion to approve the hangar lease agreement between Jeffrey Alden Anderson and the City of Emmett with the Mayor to sign.
All right. Main motion has been made by Counselor Henderson. Is there a second? Second. I'm seconded by Counselor Butler. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question to ask. Uh, is there a difference, is there a difference in prices that we're going to be charging the new person versus the old?
Uh, no, if, if you remember, uh, it, it might be slightly different because he was still under that, that original agreement, but this will, this will actually reflect the new, um, uh, prices that we had put out there, uh, per, per tie down.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the hangar lease agreement between Jeffrey Alden Anderson and the City of Emmett with Mayor to sign.
I just did it, yeah.
Oh, I guess we did do that. See what happens when, when Reznikin asks a question?
You're going to be quiet.
This is my, this is my fault for putting too many things on the agenda.
So we will now have the vote on the motion. That's what I meant to say, to approve the hangar lease between Jeffrey Alden Anderson and the City of Emmett. President Nevador?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Reznikin?
Yea.
Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Is yea? Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Did you say yea?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So five yays, no nays. Motion carries unanimously. The next matter is to make sure that that's a good lease, some about a termination.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, I'm requesting, uh, a motion to approve the termination hangar lease for Scott K. and Helen K. Carter with Mayor to sign. And as you know, this is replacing the, uh, hangar lease that we, or we're being removed to, uh, take the hangar lease we just approved.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Simmons? Hearing none. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson? Make a motion to approve the termination hangar lease of Scott K. and Helen K. Carter with the Mayor to sign.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. That we approve, uh, the, the motion to terminate the hangar lease with Scott K. and Helen K. Carter with the Mayor to sign. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. President Nevador, how do you vote?
Yea.
Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Reznikin?
Yea.
Got three yays. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Five yays, no nays. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. Next matter, are you still here?
Yes.
All right. Is the approval of the request to construct eight standard T-hangers, Mike Zener and Jeff Eckert.
Mayor Council, I, I hope that all of you can see the, um, the diagram and the, uh, pictures and stuff that were sent along with this, um, motion. Um, first off, does anybody have any questions from what they've seen? Okay, um, so what this is, is right now we have, uh, what we call is a tie down area. Um, and, and if you, if you've been at the airport and you know that is good, if you don't, then that is an open area that we use to tie down planes that don't have a cover. Um, over the years, this has been a very unsuccessful, uh, uh, revenue for us. Um, last year I think we might, we might have gotten $30 out of this tie down area. That might be, uh, pushing it. But, uh, we, we've been speaking with, uh, different people throughout the last couple of years about building some T-hangers, which are basically the same thing as a single tie down except for the coverage. And what we're finding is, um, people that have a, a plane from 100,000 to 250,000 don't want to park them outside. Who knew? Um, so, uh, so we, we have been working with different contractors and, and different pilots to see if anybody had the interest in, uh, Mike Zener and, uh, Jeff Eckert, uh, had worked with Brian and I, and I think that they, uh, have a great plan to put eight of these T-hangers up. And, um, what this will do for the city is, uh, basically, uh, give us $350,000, sorry, $350,000. Sorry, that was exciting for a second.
Yeah, that was exciting.
Sorry, um, per year, uh, which obviously is, um, a, a much larger revenue and, um, and much more usable for, uh, the pilots, the planes, and really just the city altogether. Uh, Mr. Sullivan and I have been out there and, uh, spoke with them and laid this out. And, um, this is just a, a rough sketch. Obviously, we've got a couple, uh, more things to dial in. But the objective was, is to build these hangers, um, uh, for two purposes is we have a tremendous amount of people that want hangar space, uh, that we don't have, uh, available right now. And, um, and, and we are still looking for obviously more revenue in our airport. So my proposal tonight is, uh, to build these hangers, uh, so that we can, uh, continue down the road of creating more revenue and usable, uh, airports, uh, area, uh, moving forward. This will bring, uh, once these are fulfilled, or filled, it'll be, uh, about $2,800 annually plus property tax on these. So, um, you know, our, our budget over the, over the years at the airport has not been the greatest, but, um, the last few years, uh, we've made some great changes and, um, it's been good for our airport, it's been good for, uh, you know, the, the growth and, uh, upgrade and upkeep to that airport. And I'd like to see us continue moving. So in that direction. So tonight I'm asking for a motion to approve Mike Zener and Jeff Eckert, uh, to construct eight standard T-hangers at the city, or Emmett City Airport.
Okay, before, before we go there, uh, is there going to be any other formalization? Do they, that you, are they going to coordinate the staff?
Yes, so they will coordinate the staff and obviously we just want to see if this is something that, um, the council is okay with and, and wants to approve. And then I get to work with our, uh, city attorney to, uh, really draft up leases. What will happen is that, uh, all the leases will be under Mike Zener and Jeff Eckert. And, and, uh, I think most of these, if they go, are already sold. But until they are, uh, it would be something that, um, would stay in their name until, uh, it was, uh, gone, you know, it was sold to, uh, uh, an individual and then we would terminate that lease at that hangar, uh, and return it over to the new owner. So.
Okay, just to clarify then, the building will be under your supervision and then once the leasing starts, so it'll be formal written agreement?
Yeah, so, so, yes and no. So there will be an agreement that will originate, originally be a lease for all eight of those before we even do anything with Jeff Eckert and Mike Zener. And until they are sold and, and, and taken by someone else, the, the lease will be, uh, with them. Does that make sense?
No. So the building is, just a minute, the building of all eight hangers will take place first.
Correct.
And it will be under your supervision.
Correct.
Once it is built, then they will be able to lease.
That is, well, they will, they will sell, they will sell these.
And then we will lease individually with the buyer.
Correct. But we will, we will have a lease with them before we even break ground for that, for that land. But just as we, we would with anybody before they were to build a hangar, we go into a lease for the, the property.
All right. So they have to come up with eight leases first-
Yep.
-before they start building.
That is correct.
All right. Counselor Henderson?
Um, I just, I was just wanting to clarify that, um, as far as the construction, will there be an agreement as to how that is going to be constructed or is that what this is?
Well, there will be an agreement that, that, uh, Mr. Sullivan and myself, just as any building permit would take place, all of that would happen, uh, to make sure they meet all of the qualifications, um, to build it. Uh, and like I said, there will be lease, there will be a lease agreement on the ground per each unit because it, you know, as one unit and as they get sold off, then each one of those T-hangers will be leased, uh, to the new owner of that T-hanger.
Yes.
I know that's clear.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Counselor Zinkin?
Yes. Glenn, like, it's perfectly clear that's 350 per hangar.
That is correct.
It's just $350 and I thought it was all of them, but it's not per.
It's per hangar.
Also, one other question. How far setbacks are they from the runway? Is that going to interfere with any planes that want to do any adjustments right now? Just come in, want to eat lunch or whatever, you know? Is that going to cause problems to get around to the backside?
No, and we, we predict, uh, and like I said, we're not finalized in the, uh, the design just because we didn't want to get too far until we, uh, obviously got some type of, of approval. But, um, they, they have to have setbacks from all the hangers, um, the, uh, the taxiway, um, to be able to still give us, uh, six, five or six, we haven't laid out completely, but five or six open tie downs for planes to get back there, plus be able to access the T-hanger. So, um, as far as obstruction goes, this thing will be right in line with the rest of the, um, the hangers that are existing. It will just be a different type of hangar, uh, instead of just a, a, a single door hangar that will access two planes to one, you know, one building. It'll be, uh, multiple planes to access one building, uh, from front to back. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve Mike Zener and Jeff Eckert's request to construct eight standard T-hangers. request to construct eight standard T-hangers at the Emmett Airport.
Mayor?
Counselor Henderson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve of Mike Zener and Jeff Eckert's request to construct eight standard T-hangers at the Emmett Airport.
All right, the main motion has been made by Counselor Henderson, is there a second?
All seconded.
Been seconded by Counselor Wazinkin. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, may. Hearing none, any abstentions? Hearing none. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next item is the approval of surplusing some equipment. And we have Chief Christiansen, Fire Chief Christiansen.
Mayor and Council, uh, we were contacted on October 1st by the CWI fire program to see if we had the fire hose and nozzles, um, that we'd be willing to donate to their program. They understand that this is all used equipment, that it's in not serviceable, uh, condition, and they're just using it for training to train up young firefighters to do the job. Uh, so I'm seeking approval to surplus, uh, nozzles that we're no longer using and some hose that has failed, recently failed, uh, hose testing. Are there any questions?
Hearing none, the, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Chief Christiansen to approve the fire department surplusing the equipment that is listed specifically, that's, uh, seven nozzles no longer being used, six session, six sections of two and a half inch hose that failed testing, three sections of one and three quarters inch hose that has failed testing, and one section of five inch hose that failed testing, uh, to the College of Western Idaho Fire Program.
Mayor?
Yes, President Neveker?
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Chief Christiansen to approve the fire department to surplus that was listed in his packet, uh, to the College of Western Idaho Fire Program.
All right. Motion has been made?
Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson seconds the motion. Main motion having been made by President Neveker. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I will just simply call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept the recommendation of Chief Christiansen to approve the fire department to surplus the equipment which he had listed for us to the College of Western Idaho Fire Program, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, uh, indicate by no. Hearing none. Uh, any abstentions? No abstentions. Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, let's have the department, uh, the department reports, activity reports at this time. For those here in the room, for efficiency, please line up, get ready to go. And Mr. Sullivan, what do you have?
I have no report tonight, it will be in the second packet.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Hello, any questions for me? Thank you.
Hearing none. Chief Christiansen?
Mayor and Council, I don't have a report this time, do you have any questions?
Hearing none. Ms. Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I too will have my report at our next meeting, but any questions for me?
Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Kelly?
Mayor and Council, do you have any questions for me?
Hearing none. Simmons?
Mayor and Council, do you have any questions for me?
Hearing none, thank you. Mr. Canetl?
Yes, Governor, Mayor and Council, just a big thank you to Public Works, the police department, and the fire department, they all have staff contributed, come together last week to, uh, make quick work of cleaning out the upper floor of the attic, and we will be all ready to contract here to move in this weekend. Any other questions for me?
Mayor?
Yes.
See, Mike, have we heard anything about the audio system for the council chambers helping that might start or completion date?
Yeah, so all the equipment is in except for the video stand, like we knew that was going to be on quite the backward, um, I anticipate it'll be at least another two weeks before that comes in. Once that comes in, they'll have everything ready to go and it will sweep in and the installation double in just a couple of days. Thank you.
All right, anything else? We have no engineer tonight. Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment with a hack at, uh, 8:12 P.M.
Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Counselor Henderson.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, may? Hearing none. Motion passes, we are in adjournment at 8:12 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.